Try to keep this short and sweet. At this time, we're doing the selection of Chief of Staff.
Chair.
Yes.
A motion to select John Long as the Chief of Staff. As a recommendation of your.
Recommendation, okay. Motion by Councilman Lunderman, second. Second by Councilman Little. Secretary, call for the vote. Based off the selections from the President. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wayne Little Thunder?
Yeah.
Ronald Randall?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Garfield Steele?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Seventeen unanimous motion carried. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Chair, I believe the council would like to sit with the Chief of Staff and yourself just to discuss the some concerns and some expectations moving forward so that we can all communicate collectively and work together.
Okay, so it's a good recommendation. Go ahead.
That selection will have to be based on clearance of a background check and drug test.
Yes. She's doing it right now. Go ahead, Councilman Steele.
Yeah, there's this other issue I addressed. You know, I want to make a motion that this council give a directive to Council Representative Dave Kelly to, we give him till four thirty Friday to resign from his position as Transportation Director. Or if not, that the HR Director move forward to just making that position vacant and panning him out because that position, you know, when he took the oath of office, he pretty much, you know, accepted his position as a council representative. And I don't believe that position should be held hostage by not resigning. And you know, with the transportation getting that new grant, we're going to need somebody in there to administer it. So I really believe that it is important that, you know, we move forward with that position. So that'd be my motion.
Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston?
Just maybe something to also maybe add in there. We just now selected a Chief of Staff, Mr. John Long. So I think maybe he should be maybe administer to address this right away.
Okay. So to your motion.
But it's still till Friday at four thirty and have the Chief of Staff adjust it.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Steele, second. Okay, Councilman Jumping Eagle. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wayne Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Anna Halverson? James Cross?
Oh.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Julianne, yes. Richard Greenwell, oh wait, he's excused. Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Garfield Steele?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one no, one not voting. Motion carried. Also, I believe I have one last item here, and that's the President's report.
His report?
Motion by Councilman Little Hawk Weston, second by Councilman Lunderman. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wayne Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man? Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Anna Halverson? James Cross? Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Garfield Steele? Craig Dillon?
Fifteen yes, one not voting. Motion carried. Okay, so since we're running late here, I'm gonna, we have the BIA here. I'm gonna let her do her report so we can get her out of here while we continue. The Superintendent DuVale. Correction, no, sixteen yes, one not voting. Superintendent, whenever you're ready.
Greetings. President Starr comes out and tribal council. It is an honor to work with you. My report was distributed yesterday, and I think I addressed most of what I wanted to talk to with regard to the questions that the tribal council had yesterday. And those had to do with the hiring freeze, the temporary suspension of delegated authority, the unleashing American energy and the temporary pause of the agency grant, loan, and other financial assistance programs. So as for the last one, there's an update. And that was the the had to do with the freeze on the federal financial assistance. And there was a memo that was issued rescinding the memo M dash twenty-five dash thirteen. So so the widespread freeze that was blocked by the federal judge. There's already been a memorandum that the White House has rescinded that. That memo. So I guess the only other, the only other thing that I wanted to address on my report is the probate and estate services regarding the addressing the backlog of probate cases. The agency identified one hundred and twenty-two probate cases that were ready for working by another agency. On January tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, we delivered six file boxes to the Great Plains Regional Office for assignment to other BIA agencies. And we're working to ready another shipment. In the interim, the regional office is working to put together a team of legal administrative specialist professionals from the Great Plains region. And they will be coming to the Pine Ridge Agency in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five, and they will be spending at least two business weeks assessing and working on the probate prep load with the agency probate staff.
Question. Go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
Mr. Deville, did, we never got it unless you, I heard that BIA got it. The Hatch Act, which was approved by last administration, did something come back where they wanted to make, have us make some changes or something like that? I mean, it didn't come to land, we don't, it needs to go to land, but I guess we was told that. So is there something out there?
Regarding the Hatch Act?
Yes, we approved, well, we're gonna approve for leases for
Oh.
those dispensaries, the wind energy, the solar panels and all that. Now, we're taking that authority?
Yeah, I think Mr. Zepier is handling that.
No, Mr. Zepier's not with us anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that was already sent to DC. But the word that we got, I don't remember who told, I thought maybe you said it. That it was sent back, so we're supposed to be we need to fix, fix what, I guess, fix whatever's supposed to be fixed.
Okay, I will check into that.
Okay, thank you.
My internet's slow, and I'm trying to pull it up now. But I intended to visit with him, the gentleman who gave out his cards. If it's the same one we're, that I'm thinking about, that, oh wait, I pulled it up. So I'll respond later.
Are you referring, Mr. Poyer, are you referring to the tribe doing certain realty transactions?
Yes. I can't remember what the ordinance is called, but it's along with the Hatch Act. So what we're, what the land committee and the tribe will approve is this dispensary leases. Since you guys, BIA will not sign off on the dispensary license, lease license. So we're gonna approve the dispensaries, the solar panel leases, the wind energy, the energy ones. And we were told that something was central, because it has to go to Central. And they didn't sign, they wanted something in there, but we don't know what, because we didn't get it, it wasn't given to us. So we need to take it to the land committee and make them corrections, if that's a true statement.
I believe you're referring to the Hearth Act. I haven't seen anything from it since Mr. Zepier was working on it.
Any word on execution, please?
No, actually Jennifer and I are kind of looking over that memo together, and she was gonna contact somebody. And she just hasn't had time to get back to me. She's been busy with other things. But we did, I did provide her with the memo, the policy memorandum.
Since I have the floor, I'll just. Any word on GAs today?
Well, now that the, that memorandum M dash twenty-five dash thirteen has been rescinded by the White House, we should be able to move forward on, you know, because there was a question of whether it applied to welfare assistance, general assistance. So that's not a concern anymore.
So if it's not a concern, what does that mean?
Well, we just have to wait.
You'll be getting it in six months, or six weeks, or next week, or is there any indication when it'll be out?
Well, what has to happen is the OMB will approve like a spend plan for us. And then they'll allocate our continuing resolution number two, distribution of welfare assistance.
Is there any kind of word on what the turnaround time that might be?
The last I checked into it, they said that they had no timetable when it would occur, but I will keep checking with them. You know, and like I said, that's the problem with these continuing resolutions. You know, our hands are tied to, we spend what we have.
Oops, Councilman.
You still have the floor. Ms. Deville, we, I asked last time regards to the probate cases. And I see here that there's a backlog, backlog of one hundred and twenty-two. And with the, the freeze on, on the hiring and a lot of the funding for the government positions, you have a return date of spring of two thousand and twenty-five. Are you still looking at the spring return date of two thousand and twenty-five to work on the caseload for the one hundred and twenty-two probate cases? Or is that just an estimate at this point?
No, so what happened is the President's Office sent a support letter for us to get some help with our backlog. And in turn, the Great Plains Regional Office, they were gonna try to, this, that's to put together the team. They're gonna, they're gonna be here in Pine Ridge in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. But right now, the one hundred and twenty-two cases have already been shipped to the Great Plains region. And they've divided them, I think, between seven legal administrative specialists who are gonna be working on those cases for us, helping us reduce the backlog. And we're also working on some more case files to get them to the point where someone can just take the case and work it to completion. So that's what's happening. Those files are currently being worked on by regional staff.
Okay, so what's, so what's the need for the staff coming here in spring two thousand and twenty-five?
Well, they just want to come and do an assessment of our case prep load.
Okay.
And then hopefully they can carry some more boxes back with them to work on.
That was something that I brought up. I mean, I know some council know that when my mother passed, it was in two thousand and twenty, and we still have yet to hear from her probate, and we're in two thousand and twenty-five. And you know, that's something that, I'm not the only one, but I can use that as an example that I'm sure I'm not, I'm one of many that are dealing with that, or having to, you know, going through the same thing. Thank you.
Councilman Poyer, and Councilman.
You know, how did it drop from over a thousand down to a hundred and twenty-five? In just, in less than a year?
No, those are the cases, those are the number of cases that we sent out for the regional office to work on.
Okay, so then how many more are just sitting there waiting to go out? Because you could, we could ask this, where's my probate? I mean, so about when will these all get close to getting caught up, I guess?
Well, if you flip to page five, you can actually see the number of cases right now that we have in case prep. There's thirteen hundred for cases in case prep. And that's due to all of the vacancies that we have at the probate office. But we have put that in our prior, we have prioritized that. So hopefully we can get some more monies and we'll be able to, it's, we can't even fill the positions. Like, and we're looking at the job descriptions because the contract management, contact management representative, the job description requires one year experience in probate. And it's hard to find someone with one year experience in probate. So that's part of the problem. So we have for just for, to help us out, maybe help someone qualify for those types of positions. We advertised two temporary office automation clerks. And those positions are from one to two years. And hopefully we can start building people's experience in that so that we can be able to find someone to work those cases for us. But it's due to all of the, I mean, if you look at our org chart, we have maybe ten vacancies in probate. And just no one's, no one's, either they're not applying, or they're not making the cert. They don't qualify.
Councilman Cross?
That's, that's my, my concern too, because my mother passed away, you know, I don't know, maybe seven years ago, eight. And we still, nope, nothing was sent to us as. And so, and I know, I know we took actions a while back, you know, and even some of our legal department, I don't know if Ryan stood here or not, but I think one of our attorneys wanted to help with speeding up this process too. So is that an option for, you know, to kind of help you guys get these moving?
Well, I think we have a good start on it. I mean, because if we're gonna have, we've already got seven legal administrative specialists from other parts of the region that are pitching in to help us. I mean, it'd be ideal if maybe they could maybe contract, have someone contracted to come in and just do probate work like they did when there was a backlog some years ago. And they had some Cherokee Nation or something like that come in and do all the probate.
So right now, you just got one person on it?
We have three people.
Three.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah. Gina, good afternoon. How far does these cases go back to? Like, how many years back, these thirteen hundred cases?
I think some of them that we sent out to be worked on were two thousand and nineteen.
How many staff do you have in probate, I mean, in, at the BIA?
We have three staff.
Just three?
And about ten vacancies.
But is those all, did they freeze all your positions too?
They did for, they're, they said ninety days, but it may be as short as sixty days. And we're not stopping the paperwork. We're continuing to file paperwork with the Office of Personnel so that they can get those jobs advertised.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you.
Councilman, can you use your mic?
You say you got one hundred and twenty-two that you sent out to Great Plains? I'm waiting for my mother's too, you know, so it will kind of be helpful to say, yeah, your mother's case is over here? Or if not possible, we'll be still sitting in limbo again? So I guess that's what I'm saying, asking. If it's not possible, you don't have to.
Oh, no, I mean, yeah, if you, if you want to find out if your mother's probate is on the on the cases that we sent up, just call me. You have my cell phone number.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Well, I think it would just be good for our, our people to know what their statuses are. Not, you know, not specifically for us, but for the people. If there's somewhere that they can go to see what their statuses are, so they're not in the not knowing, you know, so they if they can just go to BIA and ask, well, that's easy. But if there's like a site or a list that there's an updated, you know, something that they can see that, okay, well, I know that this is moving along, so the BIA is working, you, something like that to show that it's not just stagnant. You know what I mean?
I do know what you mean, but right now there is not a website that a person can log on to to check on the status of the probate. They'd have to call the office.
Okay, so then they would just, can you just share that number then?
Yes, six oh five, eight six seven, one five two five? And ask for the probate department.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead. Councilman Steele.
So I got a question in regards to land consolidations. You know, what's taking so long with the appraisals? Because I have a constituent said he's been waiting around ten years for appraisal to be done.
Are you talking about a land exchange maybe?
I believe so.
Okay, well, I would just have him call the office because we, there's a separate entity that actually does the appraisals. And they're kind of like in the same situation as a lot of places, that they're low on staff. But we can certainly find out the status of the appraisal.
Is this the situation where we only had like one in the whole area or something?
Yes.
It is?
One appraiser at one time, but I think they have maybe three appraisers now.
Okay.
But if they call the office, we can certainly check on the status of the appraisal.
Okay.
Go ahead, David.
Can't they use those appraisals that they're using on the buyback, on the exchange?
That Lorna Babi who talked to us about the, the last Indian or the last land buyback, she said we could no longer use those appraisals for those purposes.
Uh huh. Are they gonna reappraise then with that five million dollars that was appropriated for Pine Ridge?
Those already had appraisals on them, and that program is, that, that has ended. The, you know, the, this last round of land buyback has ended. It ended like December twentieth. But she's, she, they're there appraisals, and she told us at the Land Committee that we can't use those appraisals for other transactions.
Other, otherwise then some of our people might have got, took then my, on those appraisals.
Actually, the offers were considerably higher this round.
I mean, the appraisal of the ground should have stayed. I mean, I, I,
Councilman Cross and then.
I'll just make a motion to approve your report.
It's gonna sec, what? I just had a quick question for her.
Go ahead.
You know, when we met with, I don't know if the lady that you were talking about, Gina, but I had that question of, if you, she gave us the, the appraisals, uh, just a report on it. And I think I asked if, like, say if you're own, or you're in a allotted land, and say you want to buy one of your siblings' interest, could we still use that appraisal during that time? Remember I asked that question? And she said, yes, you can. So now you're telling me that, is it, it's kind of done, expired?
Yeah, the, those, that offer set ended December twentieth, I believe. But you know, there's always the negotiated sale as well. You can always negotiate a price for a sale.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Cross, second by Councilman Little Hog Weston to approve report. Oh, okay. Oh, second by Councilman Steele?
Yes.
Secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hog Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Steele? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Seventeen unanimous motion carried. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yes. Okay, so moving on to the next agenda item is fifth member's office. Okay, we've got a motion by Councilman Steele. She did have a, submit a port, a report, but I think she's on, she had another scheduled meeting today. She did submit one yesterday, I believe, with Stacy.
Yep.
Okay, real quick, they'll pass it out. Go ahead.
So last administration with our past fifth member, he was working on returning some, three more of those young children from Indiana, I believe. Is someone doing a follow-up on that work?
Not that I'm aware of, but she's looking into everything that was left in, in the office. There was no really a transition, according to her.
You know, because the reports that we got from Justin last, last term, it, it wasn't just Indiana. I believe there was more at that school that we retrieved those other three young babies back from, but it seems like that priority went out the door when, when we replaced Mr. Poyer. But, um, I don't know how the council feels, but I think maybe we should look, look into either doing some, some type of contract with him or getting someone to really look at bringing those, those, those young ones back. Because he did, he, he was doing a good job and, and doing a lot of work in that area and those of you that were there when they brought those three little ones back, it was quite emotional, and I, I think, I think it would be a good idea, you know, to follow up and, and make sure that continues to happen. But maybe that's just something, Julian, we could consider in finances or some.
Go ahead.
I can definitely bring it up in finance, but I believe Trina is the one who actually started this back in, I believe, twenty eighteen regarding those three children, so I'd like to hear from her before we step into her lane. But we can bring it back into finance with her discussion.
Okay. So who's second? Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Randall, Councilman Standing Soldier. Approve the report. Secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
Yep.
Norman, Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Normal.
Where's your name tag?
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross? Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hog Weston? Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Garfield Steele? Craig Dillon?
Unanimous seventeen, motion carried. Okay, so on to our two-thirds items. All right. Motion to approve all of them. Okay. So at this time, we're gonna, we're gonna jump right into it, and we're gonna go to, I'll start with the Education Committee, and I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Thank you. Resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribe Council, Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the amendments to the American Horse School Policy and Procedure Manual twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, adding provisions for reasonable accommodations and grievance procedures. Skip down to the fourth, whereas the American Horse School is tribally chartered school located in Pass Creek District of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas on August second, twenty twenty-three, the American Horse School adopted the American Horse School Excellence in Education Policy and Procedure Manual twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and now proposes changes by adding the provisions for reasonable accommodation and grievance procedures. And whereas the OST Education Committee has reviewed this matter and recommends approval by the tribal council, now therefore be resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the proposed amendments to the American Horse School Excellence in Education Policy and Procedure Manual twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, adopted August second, twenty twenty-three, by adding to the provisions for reasonable accommodation and grievance procedures as attached and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Cross. Secretary, call for the vote.
Speed it fast. Faster than speed.
I don't even have the resolution.
Sorry, go ahead.
Chair. So I know we tabled the USDA food, the USDA summer food program, because you're gonna meet with Governor, the Governor. However, we didn't discuss the Bowie payment, and I know there was talk about the Bowie payment because that's something that we still need to handle, and that's something that Governor Roden cannot resolve because we still owe that payment to Governor Ro, I mean, Mr. Bowie. I know a lot of, a lot of titles out there, and I have a payment plan here, and Mr. Bowie has been here all day. And so I am bringing it to the council because this cannot be a committee decision. And Cora also met with Mr. Bowie, and so, I, I mean, it, it is a topic that we do have to discuss here.
Chair, we're right in the middle of a vote. There's a motion and a second.
Was there a motion?
And a second.
My apologies. I apologize. Go ahead.
Yes, round the vote, secretary.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hog Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Steele? Craig Dillon?
Seventeen unanimous motion carried.
Reading the lands one too, should I go?
Yes, go ahead.
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, Oglala Sioux Tribe authorizing and directing Oglala Sioux Tribe Environmental Protection Program to administer grants, contracts, and awards on behalf of Oglala Sioux Tribe, including the Oglala Sioux Tribe Brownsfield's Tribal Response Program Bipartisan, Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Award. Down to the fourth, whereas Article one, two, three, four, Article four, section one T of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, authorize the tribal council to power the delegate to subordinate, subordinate boards and offices, any of the enumerated powers in Article four, section one, deserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas on January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, the Land and Natural Resources Committee of the Tribal Council met and approved a motion to authorize and direct the Oglala Sioux Tribe Environmental Protection Program to administer grants, contracts, and awards on behalf of the tribe, including but not limited to the Oglala Sioux Tribe Brownsfield's Tribal Response Program Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Infrastructure Award, which among other things will fund the cleanup of three contaminated sites on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas in addition to the BTRP BIL Infrastructure Award, the OST EPP administers other grants, contracts, and awards on behalf of the tribe, including but not limited to the Indian Environmental General Assistance Program Grant, Section one oh six Water Pollution Control Grant, Section three nineteen Non Point Source Program Grant, Brownsfield's Tribal Response Program Grant, Underground Storage Tank Program Grant, and Leaking Underground Storage Tank Program Grant. And by this resolution, the tribal council delegates authority to the OST EPP to administer and manage these grants, contracts, and awards. Now therefore be resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby delegates authority to the Oglala Sioux Tribe Environmental Protection Program to oversee, manage, and administer environmental grants, contracts, and awards on behalf of the tribe under the supervision of the tribal council and the Land and Natural Resources Committee of the tribal council. And these grants, contracts, and awards include but are not limited to the Brownsfield Tribal Response Program Bipartisan Infrastructure Law Infrastructure Award, Indian Environmental General Assistance Program Grant, Section one oh six Water Pollution Control Grant, Section three nineteen Non Point Source Program Grant, Brownsfield's Tribal Response Program Grant, Underground Storage Tank Program Grant, and Leaking Underground Storage Tank Program Grant. And whereas the OST EPP may submit applications for other grants, contracts, and awards on behalf of the tribe with the approval of the Land and Natural Resources Committee and the tribal council or the executive committee. If the tribal council is not in session, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Poyer. Secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yep.
Sonia Little Hog Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Steele? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Seventeen unanimous motion carried.
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, the Oglala Sioux Tribe requesting one hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the Oglala Sioux Tribe's stream flow gauging project and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars for the establishment of a groundwater monitoring network from the Bureau of Indian Affairs for the FY dash twenty-four BIA PL six thirty-eight contract award funding. Whereas the Bureau of Indian Affairs has FY dash twenty-four PL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight contract to fund the Oglala Sioux Tribe Water Resources Department in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the Oglala Sioux Tribe's stream flow gauging project and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars for the establishment of a groundwater monitoring network. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe Land and Natural Resources Committee met on January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, an approved presentation of this resolution to the tribal council to request this funding award and to authorize and direct the Director of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Water Resources Department and other tribal officials, including the tribal president or, in his absence, the tribal vice president, to execute necessary documents to apply for and receive the Bureau of Indian Affairs funding award. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby request one hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the Oglala Sioux Tribe's Stream Flow Gauging Project and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars for the establishment of a groundwater monitoring network from the Bureau of Indian Affairs FY dash twenty-four PL ninety-three dash six thirty-eight contract award funding. And be it further resolved that the tribal council hereby authorizes and directs the Director of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Water Resources Department and other tribal officials, including the tribal president or, in his absence, the tribal vice president, to execute necessary documents to apply for and receive the Bureau of Indian Affairs funding award. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Poyer, Councilman Randall? Secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
Yeah.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Bull Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes. Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Yes.
James Cross. Julianne Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Garfield Still. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Unanimous seventeen, motion carried.
Resolution of Ogallawasoo tribal council, Ogallawasoo tribe removing Blaine Little Thunder as a voting member of the Ogallawasoo tribe land and natural resources committee in compliance with ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas the Ogallawasoo tribe on twenty-ninth day of May, two thousand nineteen, by adopting ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two, did set forth a standing committee ordinance, which governs the standing committees of Ogallawasoo tribal council. And whereas on the twenty-seventh day of January, two thousand twenty-five, the OST land and natural resources committee did receive a letter of resignation from the OST land and natural resources committee from Mr. Blaine Little Thunder of the Eguness District dated January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas the OST land and natural resources committee on the twenty-seventh day of January, two thousand twenty-five, with a quorum present to conduct business, did approve this resolution for presentation to Ogallawasoo tribal council. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallawasoo tribal council does hereby, based upon the resignation of Blaine Little Thunder from the OST land and natural resources committee, does hereby remove Blaine Little Thunder as a voting member from the OST land and natural resources committee for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-six Starkums Outmusso Administration. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Poyer. Secretary call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Not voting.
Ronald Randle.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bull Little White Man.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear. Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Garfield Still. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Sixteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
A resolution of Ogallawasoo tribal council, the Ogallawasoo tribe making the Badlands Bombing Range Program a standalone program of the Ogallawasoo tribe. Skipping to the one, two, three, four. Fourth, whereas Article four, section one T of the Ogallawasoo tribe authori- authorizes the tribal council the power to delegate to subordinate boards and offices, any of the enumerated powers in Article four, section one, deserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas the tribal council has established the Badlands Bombing Range Program to clean up military debris on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And that program is within Ogallawasoo tribe natural resources department. And whereas on January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, the land and natural resources committee of the tribal council met and approved a motion to recommend removing the Badlands Bombing Range Pro- Range Program from Ogallawasoo tribe natural resource department and making it a standalone program of the tribe. And whereas the tribal council concurs with then recommendation of the land and natural resources committee. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallawasoo tribal council hereby removes the Badlands Bombing Range Program from the Ogallawasoo tribe natural resource department and declares that it is a standalone program of the tribe. And be it further resolved that the Badlands Bombing Range Program shall report to the tribal council and shall be under the supervision of the land and natural resources committee of the tribal council. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Poyer. Secretary call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randle.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bull Little White Man.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Garfield Still. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Seventeen unanimous motion carried.
Chair. Thank con- the, the last one, uh, referred over to finance, there's there was, uh, addition from the land committee, but it's not in the ordinance, so we'll take the finance to get it straightened up. Thank you.
But could I just read it anyway?
I have no problem with that. So we'll switch over to finance and then you can whenever you want to feel free to add Mr. Bowie, that's up to you.
Thank you, Chair. So as stated earlier, uh, we did, we discussed the USDA, however, we still have to discuss the Bowie's payment. The dollar amount is the nine hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Mr. Bowie has been here all day today. Uh, and if you'd like to hear from him, he does have the invoices that, uh, he did charge. Um, so he does have the receipts with him. And in front of you, you have the payment plan. If accepted, this is a, we, and Cora is online if you have any questions.
Go ahead, Councilman.
You know, I think also i- in our finance committee meeting, we did refer this to Cora and we did, uh, ask that Mr. Bowie uh, work with Cora on a payment, on the plan. And, and this is what they're coming back with.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Randall.
Yeah, my question is, is this separate from the US Foods? It's not a be, it's not a reimbursement process? So if we go negotiate or we negotiate what that other price is, this is not part of that reimbursement that they owe you?
No.
So how did it, this is totally different?
Remember in, um, June, July, and August, they stopped sending the invoices to pay for the food for, uh, Mr. Bowie. And so this was the accumulated amounts for those three months.
I guess the question is, was there a resolution? To this. Treasurer, are you on? Can you hear us?
I sure can, I can hear you.
Okay. Did you hear?
Whenever, whenever finance requested or told Bowie to meet with me, he came upstairs and we met. And we, uh, we agreed that we could probably deal with that amount that was that's on that payback plan. It was like two hundred, a little over two hundred thousand a month. And the rent payment that usually comes back to the tribe, the fifty-two thousand five hundred. And that would cover everything. The, it, it is a part of the summer food service program. It's the last month of food that was distributed. But if the president can talk to the governor and, because that was a part of that grant. That was the part, that was the last payment that was supposed to come in. But it didn't come in. So if we pay it, we may be able to recoup it from the amount that is owed to the state. Because it's all the same program. But he just couldn't get paid the last payment because we didn't get the money.
Councilwoman Cross. Go ahead, uh, Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
I mean, it's up to the council. Uh, do you want to, it's up to you. Do you want to include this in that table to have the president inquire if, uh, he can include that with Governor Ro- um, Roden? Or Mr. Bowie, did you, would you like to speak to the council? I'll yield the floor to the, to Mr. Bowie. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Pine Ridge store, we've been operating the red since September. Uh, nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars is a lot of money to me. The rest of the stores have been having to kick in to cover cash flow and things like that. But it's, it's come a time for us, uh, my banker especially, that Pine Ridge has got to stand on its own and what I don't want to do is what we'll probably have to do, which is starting to cut services that don't make finan- don't make financial sense for us. Things like the elder cards, the vets tubes, uh, security. Cash around for check cashing, um, the float for charge accounts. All those are things that we don't, we don't really make any money on. In fact, there's a lot of them cost us money. And I don't want to have to do that, but w- we're, we're now into almost seven months if, if this payment plan, and we just, we just can't afford it. And I don't think there's any question that the food wasn't delivered. We didn't do what we were supposed to do. And I've heard from most of the council members that say that it needs to get paid because we owe it. So I'm humbly asking that you accept this payment plan that Cora and I worked out together.
Councilman Weston and then Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Uh, thank you, Chair. In the small slim chance that we do recoup, uh, this money and the state of South Dakota decides to, uh, give payment to Mr. Bowie here. And if the check is made out to him, is there any agreement for him to bring that money back to the tribe? Just in case you, you go and talk to, you know, the Department of Education and, you know, it, it comes down to where, you know, they're gonna, um, let this all, you know, pan out and they're gonna pay Mr. Bowie like they're supposed to out of the grant. And like how To- uh, Cora said, you know, recoup the money. But if they make it, make the checks out to Mr. Bowie, you know, and we start this payment pro- plan, are we gonna get that money back from Mr. Bowie just in case?
If I could answer that, um, I'm just, I'm just a vendor of the Ogallawasoo tribe. The agreement was with the Ogallawasoo tribe and the state of South Dakota. That check wouldn't get made to me, but in the, in the rare slimmest of chances that it was, of course I would give it back. I, I.
But weren't you received, didn't you receive, uh, early on in this program disbursement payments?
To this, to the tribe and then the tribe to me.
Okay.
Councilman Jumping Eagle, and then we have the treasurer online.
You know, you know, I think what, you know, the people need to hear, so that's one point nine. Now we add on another nine hundred thousand, almost a million dollars to that debt. We were told last administration when this came up that the tribe would not be liable for either payment. We were told that. And then we were told that you were, y- you, you, you were part, you're gonna be part of fundraising to get this money back. How's your fundraising going?
Well, we're just, we're in the beginning stages, but I'm spending a heck of a lot of time trying to figure out how to get bills paid. I've been out to five meetings out here. I'm, I'm working hard. I, 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 trust me. The, the contacts that I've made and I continue to sit in on meetings that I really don't have time for. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna do everything I can. You, you have my word. But it's also very it's physically exhausting, it takes time, and it's emotionally exhausting trying to fight bankers off. And that's where we are.
Okay, treasurer. Cora.
Thank you. It's kind of hard to unmute my phone. Um, but you know, I, I always talk about paying our bills. And this is a bill from a local vendor that we need to pay. There. We can't, we can't go around and make bills everywhere and not pay them. Because that's what the tribe used to do. And, and we can't do that anymore. We have to do things better. We have to be better. We have to pay our bills. And this is the bill. That amount could put anyone out of business. And I, I don't like threats. And that's what I told RF today in our conversation. I don't like threats. Because then it just makes me angry. But I understand where he's coming from. I understand his frustration. He did his part in good faith. Because he thought he was gonna get paid. And you know, if we do pay him, we, we can, we will need to make it a part of the package that the president goes to the governor with. Because it's a part of the program. He, he provided the food all the way through the program. I haven't seen a, seen the invoice yet. I've just seen the calculation sheets. So that was what we went over. And I asked him to bring the invoices because council members were asking for those. So I hope he has. But we did work on a plan that is doable that will be done in four months. And whatever package or agreement or whatever letter or information the president takes to the governor, this bill, the nine hundred and seventy thousand will need to be a part of that. It's going to end up being more than nine hundred and seventy thousand. But it still needs to be a part of it. Because this is a part of that program. It was an expense of the summer food program. So my recommendation is to get it paid and put it into whatever the president is going to take to the governor.
Councilman Still.
You know, um, this, this bill that sits in front of us, you know, it it benefited every single one of our districts this summer. A lot of children were fed, a lot of children were happy, whether, whether we s- say it or see it or not. Those are the facts. And I believe that, um, you know, like Cora said, Mr. Bowie did this in good faith to ensure that, uh, our kids are fed. And in our private conversation with him, we said, you know, don't, don't credit the food out anymore, but we did, we said it jokingly, but you know, in reality, you know, he, he helped this program. And to see all those kids, you know, excited to get a meal, you know, that's, that's what it was about. And I, I'll make a motion to approve it. Um, like I said, it, it benefited every single one of our districts, whether we like it or not. And I'd hate to see Mr. Bowie, you know, affected by, you know, this is almost a million dollars. But like I said, you know, our, 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 our membership, our kids benefited from it. So I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Question.
Got a motion by Councilman Still, question.
You know, I wanted to say too that, um, uh, it's not really the, it's not the fault of the of RF Bowie. I think like Councilman Still said, you know, he did what he had to do by providing the food for the summer food program. And I think that he thought maybe that, uh, he was doing it in good faith and he was going to get reimbursed back. But it didn't happen. It didn't happen, so now he's stuck with the bill. And now he's, uh, asking us, the tribe, to, uh, remedy this, uh, this, uh, situation for him. And it is, you know, it's hurting his business. And it's hurting, go- going to hurt a lot of different things in the, in the store, like he said. You know, I'm sure he's gonna have to make some changes, you know, to certain things. But, uh, like we did through finance committee, we did ask the treasurer to, uh, sit down and work out a plan. And this is what she's come back with. But I want to say to RF Bowie that, uh, from now on, moving forward, that, uh, you don't ever put yourself in a situation like this again. I think that, uh, with everything, I think that we should always have, uh, something in black and white that, uh, puts the tribe into puts the tribe into these kinds of situ- uh circumstances where we approved it. Whether it be tribal council or by the executive board. And so I think from now on, I think um, you know, that's something maybe food for thought. Uh, I know it's a hard lesson learned, but I think that maybe from now on, we just need to make sure of that. That everything is done uh through that process, but always make sure you have a resolution of some sort that approved it. So I do agree that, you know, he's, it's not his fault. But again, that's a something, President, that you're gonna have to uh, but like we recommended earlier, you know, when you meet with the governor, I think that has to be brought out to um him on this other issue. I just have to say that because some of us kinda was dealing with this last administration. Now it's into this new administration. So yeah, just wanted to say that. But that's what we asked Cora to do. Thank you.
Councilman Standish.
We do really have to get a vote done on this, but I'd just like to say that um had you dealt with this last term, we wouldn't be dealing with it now. So we're all at fault. But whether the council approved it, whether it was done in executive board, whatever, we don't know the, the end result of that. I mean, that was still up in the air. But I do caution you to take this as a learning lesson. Get full council approval. That way you got 21 people to blame. Don't ever go this alone. Thank you.
Councilman Randall.
It's kind of a question to what Ryan said. When this was done in the past administration, was it a legal action ordinance taken or was a vote taken that you, that we will not be responding, the tribe will not be responsible for this? Was it a motion or what, what, why was that said that way? Ryan, you said that.
Yeah, that's what we were told. We were told by um Councilman Halverson and by Bowie at a meeting that we would not be responsible for this. You were there with them, yeah. And when she brought you in and then, that's why I asked you. You said you were gonna do the uh, the um, the fundraising.
I am gonna do fundraising, but I guess I didn't, I, I don't remember saying anything that, that uh the tribe wouldn't be responsible. I, I'm, I'm gonna work my butt off so it doesn't. I, I, and we've got some things in the works, but I, I'm sorry, but I, I don't remember saying that. And if I did, I certainly misspoke.
So it wasn't, it wasn't a legal act, it was just talk? And then the fundraising is just talk to uh that?
Halverson and at the time saying uh about fundraising, they can fundraise, you know, we can go get out there and get fundraising to pay, make some of this payment back. Well, I think that um, I don't know if that had happened or if it's happening. But um, right now, today, we're stuck with this bill. And it's adding all that up, it's 900 and something thousand dollars that we owe RF Bowie. And the thing about it is, you know, we can go back all the time and say, well, it fed the children through the summer. You know, because it did. It fed all the children. You know, that's why I say it's a hard lesson learned. You know, if we can make sure that the next time around, that it's a program that is handling this, not a council people. We should not ever put ourselves into a situation like that. And you know, saying that tonight, we'll probably get backlash from it. You know, you know, we know that. You know, some of us speak up on issues and then we get backlash, you know, on Facebook and whatever. I'm tired of that. I really am. You know, being a tribal leader in this circle for many years, you know, you know, these things come happen. But we should learn from it. We should learn that we should never do that. There's a process for everything that we should do as council. And, and I hate to say that. That's why we have orientations at the beginning of our administration. We should kinda understand what we need to do. So you know, it's not Mr. Bowie's fault that uh this was going to happen. But now it's on our lap. And we have to figure out how we're gonna pay him back. At the same time, we got the other one with the state.
Was there, was there a second on that motion? Okay. Okay, Councilwoman Halverson.
You know, I was um, I'm glad this conversation is back because I know I've been getting text messages and Facebook messages and a lot of the tribal membership out there concerned on this issue. You know, when I briefly spoke about it earlier, I tried to keep in mind that this is a program that was for children. And so, you know, I did, I kept it positive. Kept trying to do my best to keep it positive as best that I, as I could. And I've been, you know, working extremely hard on getting this repayment plan and this um debt so that the tribe is not responsible for it. I know I've had many conversations with RF Bowie on how we could get this fund raised, how we could get it paid. But the agreement has to be in place where we as a tribe are paying it and not these other vendors. So when other vendors pay the tribe, it's a reimbursement. It's not Bowie paying himself, if that makes sense. So we do have um conversations with a tribe, currently a tribe that is possibly going to help the Ogallala Sioux Tribe to pay for this as long, as well as two other tribes out there who are willing to see the benefit of this program and this debt that what we provided across the summer. And you know, there's also um, uh insurance claim that errors and omissions was filed with our insurance agency. I seen it happen before with other errors that were um within this tribe just recently as well. And so it is possible, it just takes some time to get this paid. You know, I've, like I said, I've taken 100% accountability and worked every day for seven months on this issue with the last admin and this current admin. And I know right now, there's a lot of conversation out there, um misinformation out there regarding this program, but I'm gonna hold my head high and know that this is for the children and not speak um negative on it anyway. Because I seen it was a great impact and, you know, for the future, I hope that these type of programs benefit our children this summer after summer after summer. Because, you know, I just, I, I see the importance after being a boots-on-the-ground person with this food. And even during um, and with the help of Bowie, you know, there was a little bit of a negative um statement on him for this. But I think, you know, even during COVID, when this situation came up too, he was the only grocer that made food deliveries that had food brought into our reservation, supplies like toilet paper, all those necessities brought in. But you know, I'm not gonna shift the blame. I'm not gonna shift the focus on anything else other than this issue because, you know, it's something that um we've been really targeting to try to get paid back. You know, all we're needing is um a payment so that it doesn't look like, you know, he's paying himself, basically. But it just, um, there is a huge fundraising um effort that we're reaching out to other tribes. You know, I did get authorization from our tribal treasurer on reaching out to that. I think we even made a motion in finance. So these type of stuff are not being done solely based on myself alone. They, they do come with committee actions. It's um, this, you know, it's just not something I've done alone by myself. Thank you.
The treasurer, Cora. Go ahead, Treasure. Okay, she's off. Uh, oh, she's back on. Hang on. No second. Okay. Okay, well, you know, we're taking too, too, spending too much time on this. We're just gonna go ahead and run the motion. We have a second. So uh, we have a second by um Councilman Little White Man. Secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall. Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosellis.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Not voting.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross.
Chair, council, call point of order here. We got a vote, vote on going on the floor. Let's run the vote. Councilman, no.
Julianne Spotted Bear. Yes. Sorry, Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Puer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Garfield Steele.
Yep.
Craig Dillon.
No, and it would be nice to be recognized when you raise your hand. Certain people get to talk, talk, talk. We raise our hands and we're ignored, which is BS.
Well, it's just like we said, you know, a long time ago, people would stand when they speak. Well, I can't, when you just go like this, I'm looking at 21 other people. If we wanna, if we wanna uh play that, then I'm, I'm gonna ask you to keep your hand raised. Because I, I'm not doing it intentionally. I just didn't see you.
And yes, six, no, one not voting. Motion carried. Go ahead, Councilman Puer.
No, for the sergeant-at-arms, that needed to be clarified before you interrupted. Because what Mr. Cross said was true. This was tabled and it came back. So there's a understanding with that too. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the next line item in, in finance. So I'll do that. All right, I was, I didn't mark them off. I'm sorry.
Are you buying supper?
Okay, reports. We'll move on to the next agenda items. Aberdeen area. I don't see them here. Oyate Health. I don't see anybody here. And banishment, exclusion. Go ahead, Councilman.
Chair, you know, I don't know how much times we're gonna harp about this, but we really need some names coming forward. And we, I, I've always requested this, to see some names um from the Attorney General's office. And, and I get that she's a little overworked, but there should have been some names that she gave to our attorneys. And I believe there was like 22 or something of them, but you know, it's, I, I believe the tribe at one time banished three individuals and then stopped. But you know, we talk about being serious when people are selling meth, you know, and fentanyl and the bootlegging and all of that, you know, we, we need to be serious and, and start banishing these individuals for, you know, feeding that poison to our community. So I, I would like to see some names next month. I, I, I say this every council meeting. I'm sick and tired of people ignoring that and not bringing those names forward. So I don't know what else we need to do. What do we need to do? Because it, it is an ordinance form and we flex our muscles. That's what we do. Flex our muscles and then nothing happens. So my motion is that the Attorney General and our legals bring those names for the next regular session. Or however that process is, but I'm, I'm, we've been having a blank agenda item for the last two years and that needs to be addressed.
I think it was discussed. Um, but I, I agree, you know, it's, if we're not gonna use it, then what's it there for? Because there are some serious crimes out there that we need to deal with. Heck, we're in a state of emergency. Um, I don't know if the, we, the Attorney General needs to be on line or present to, to address that line item. Something to maybe talk with law and order about that. So. Sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
Chair, um, before we lose Cora, I'd like to make a motion that we set up. A team to meet with the governor on the USDA repayments and uh the Bowie reimbursements.
Okay, we could make that motion, but I already have my crew ma- uh throwing some dates out there. Now, we, we just need to make that connection and see if he, those dates are available.
Would that work?
In a gaming compact.
Okay, yes, in a gaming compact. Uh, we can definitely do um, address that. Hopefully he'll, he'll sit down with us. I can't guarantee you myself, now that I got a new uh, the, the attorney approved, will work on those things. Exactly, that, that would, that'd be awesome if we can all go meet with him. Okay, so you're very, oh. Take your ID. Um, so it'd be awesome, the more, uh, the merrier. It, it, it'll be really strong if the full council was, was to show up at the state capitol, you know. Yeah, yeah, that's, I, I can't guarantee you a date because I don't even know. But when I, soon as I find out a date, a date, I'm gonna send it out to uh everybody here and dust off your suits or go buy a suit. And I'm, I'm sure Stacy does, so. And I'm, I'm sure Stacy does, so. Wait, wait, so you still wanna run that motion? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Little White Man, seconded by Councilman Steele. No making deals now. Secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yep.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Ronald.
Oh, yeah.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Don't go anywhere. We still got.
James Cross, Julianne Spotted Bear. Tyler Lunderman. David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Banished.
Garfield Steele. Craig Dillon.
Okay, so we have meal tickets up here for those of you who are gonna eat here.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen yes, two not, not voting.
Fifteen yes, two not voting, motion carried. Okay, motion to adjourn by Councilman Lunderman. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman, uh, Little White Man.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yep.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Bo Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little. Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson. James Cross. Julianne Spotted Bear. Tyler Lunderman. Tyler Lunderman. David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Garfield Steele. Craig Dillon.
Fourteen yes, three not voting, motion carried. Okay, again, I want to thank everybody for, uh, taking, taking care of business today and being patient. And we'll see you next session or at the Capitol. Have a good night and safe travels home.